I'll call the regular meeting of council, April seventeenth, twenty twenty four, to order, please. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda with the following additions, seventeen D, clarification of false information.
Questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Thank you, council. I need a motion to adopt the minutes from the March eighteenth, twenty twenty four regular meeting of council.
Okay, I'll move to adopt the minutes of March eighteenth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting of council, with the following amendment, remove Terry Parker as being present.
Seconder.
I'll second.
Questions, comments, errors, omissions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Thank you, council. Motion carried. Now, item four, public input, do we have any appointments made?
No.
Nope, we're good. Okay, disclosures, council?
No.
And reports from fire department. We have the honor of Steve with us tonight.
As you can see, March was a busy month, or twenty calls that month, and fire season has begun. Already, yeah, so probably this month will be fairly busy. Any questions?
You're saying fire season has begun, so I'm assuming that's, things are drying up quite quickly?
Yeah, forest fires for season began officially on Monday of this week, and I think we've had one grass fire this week already, so.
So would the residents, if they have to burn anything there to?
If you have to burn now, you should follow the map that was put out. Actually, the map today is already gone to yellow, so that means eight P M. to eight A M. burning.
Okay, that's good to know.
So going forward, anybody can check the D N R. website to see what it is, it's posted. The new restrictions are posted every day at two o'clock, so every day at two o'clock, you can go on and see whether it's green, yellow, or red. Green, you can burn anytime, yellow, it's eight to eight, and reds, obviously, no burn.
Yellow already.
Yeah.
That was giving me my question too, when's the cycling update, but you've already answered the question.
Yeah, no, D N R. looks after that, and they will monitor it, and they will make changes daily at two P M. term.
Okay, can I get a motion to receive the fire report?
Motion to receive fire report?
Seconder.
I'll second.
Any questions for Steve, Willie Searcy? Comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Thank you, council. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. See you later.
Thanks.
Don't be in a hurry, you can stay a while if you want.
We have a training night tonight, so.
Ah, there you go, another busy night.
Yeah, we got a crew on the water, I think, training, so right now, so.
Thanks again, have a good night.
Yeah.
Okay, presentations, I don't believe there are any scheduled for tonight. Permit applications, we have seven permit applications, so council has the report, so things are starting to pick up, obviously, because these are seven just for issued in March, so hopefully we'll have a busy building season. We do have a proclamation tonight, it's the Disability Awareness Week, May twenty sixth to June first, twenty twenty four, embracing accessibility, inspiring change, whereas the rural community of Hanwell is committed to assisting citizens with disabilities to participate fully in our community, and whereas many persons living with disabilities face barriers in the areas of employment, access to information, transportation, housing, education, recreation, and other disability-related supports, and whereas we believe that more citizens with disabilities should have the chance to access disability-related supports to improve their opportunities in Brunswick, and whereas we support the theme embracing accessibility, inspiring change. Now therefore be it known that I, Dave Morrison, Mayor of the Rural Community of Hanwell, do hereby request the citizens of the Rural Community of Hanwell to join with our council in recognizing persons with disabilities and the role in our community by the observance of Disability Awareness Week, May twenty sixth to June first, twenty twenty four. Okay, I move you on to item ten, petitions and delegations, we have none. Okay, business arising, we have item A, the Kingswood levy.
So everyone received the report, kind of setting out what was brought in, January to December of last year, what was paid out, and then the remittance this year. So I know they're looking for direction on if, or they're wondering if we will pay for their repairs to their Radisson sign, the one that's on the highway, the white one, and also looking at blue signage, so you guys all have a background on that.
May I speak on the accommodation tax levy report?
Pardon?
May I speak on the accommodation tax levy?
Certainly. Counsel Holt, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm trying to grasp my head around everything, and folks, I apologize if I seem a little destroyed, but it's just, it's me being me. And I had touched base with Terry, just asking some questions, and she answered them without any questions or issues, or answered basically all the things I wanted to find out, but there we go. When we're taking a look for twenty twenty three, and I think she also mentioned it right here in the second paragraph, we have an income of hundred and five, three ninety one oh four, okay? We expensed forty one thousand one hundred and thirty two dollars and nineteen cents to advertising costs for Radisson, okay, as them was approved last year. In twenty twenty two, they passed a motion whereby, and again, I'm trying to pull it up. It had to redo with the tax levy collection, and it was moved by Councilor Septon, seconded by Councilor Bissel. Whereas the city of Fredericton is currently collecting the accommodation tax levy on behalf of Hanwell, and whereas the local hotels ask for the funds to be collected by Hanwell, and whereas mandated services for tourism through the Capital Region Service Commission are mandatory in twenty twenty three, and whereas the accommodation tax levy could offset the costs of the mandated services, I move to authorize and direct the clerk to notify the city of Fredericton that effective January first, twenty twenty three, that the rural community of Hanwell will be responsible to collect the accommodation tax levy, and it was unanimously carried. So we're showing an expense of forty one one thirty two nineteen. Although not stated that it would be, it inferred that the accommodation tax levy would be utilized to offset the cost of our commitment to the Capital Region Service.
Yes, that's the mandated tourism amount, correct?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, and mandated tourism amount was fifty seven thousand one hundred and forty nine, as Terry posted in this bulletin. And in her bulletin, and she appropriately places it, if we in turn utilize that fund, which it was, I'm not going to say intended to be used for, but inferred that it would be used for that, we will only have seven thousand one hundred and ten dollars and thirty, eighty five cents left in our tourism levy for twenty twenty three.
I believe your math is correct.
Now, we have been proceeding with our Hanwell days, with the grasp of utilizing our tourism levy to offset most of those costs, okay? We don't know what the tourism levy is going to be in twenty twenty four, I'm going to presume it's going to probably be in the vicinity of a hundred and five, a hundred and six thousand dollars. Our mandated tourism fee for twenty twenty four is fifty eight thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars, and we are already committed ourselves to thirty six hundred dollars a month, which translates to like forty three thousand dollars a year, something along that particular line, forty three thousand two hundred. So that essentially adds up to a hundred and one thousand four hundred and thirteen. Are we going to utilize the accommodation tax levy to cover our cost as far as our commitment to the Capital Service Region, or Capital Region Service Commission? We apparently didn't in twenty twenty three. If we in turn are going to utilize that in twenty twenty four, and continue with the thirty six hundred dollar a month to just strictly one establishment, we won't have any money for tourism.
Or very little.
Or minimal amount.
Just as a point of work, real quick here, it sounds like it's moving from a report more to an open discussion, we probably should motion suspend the rules.
Yeah, can I have a motion to suspend the rules?
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Seconder.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Again, I'm not.
Yep.
Yeah, no, it's okay, you can make a report, but it sounds like the questions are coming, so we should vote for the.
The rules, all those in favor of suspending the rules, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Okay, the rules are now suspended, so carry on, Counsel Holt.
Thank you. That's all I want to know, but the only generation that we have is one particular source, it's going to be a hundred and four thousand, that's a guesstimate compared to last year. We've already, we have a bylaw, or a motion that was brought forward in twenty twenty two, that inferred, didn't specifically state, but it inferred that it could be used for that purpose. So are we going to use that to cover our mandated costs, or are we going to be using other Hanwell funds to cover the cost of the mandated service? I just, again, it's just me being me, I apologize, but I just want to know, and so that we can build upon it.
It is my understanding that that's council's wishes, Counsel Brinkley.
I just have a question about the thirty six hundred dollars, how bound are we to that? Can we change that, or is that?
You made a motion.
We made a motion, so that's, for this year, there's no changing that.
Correct.
That's correct.
Nope, hold on.
I didn't think it was.
Just hold on, just hold on.
So the, I looked up the motion today, and you guys did not put a time limit on it. You just said thirty six hundred dollars, and you didn't say for how long.
Well, that would, that would lead me to believe that we don't necessarily have to reimburse that to the establishment for the full year.
I think their ask was, if I recall, when they were here, I think their ask was for the full year, so we didn't put a time limit on it, I think it was inferred that we were going to cover that for twenty twenty four.
It was inferred that we're going to be utilizing the tax levy for the, paying their commitment to the capital.
Which I believe we are doing, that's the mandated services, yes, from Kansas.
No, if you read, Mayor Morrison, if we use these funds towards our mandated service, then there's only seven thousand one hundred and ten dollars and eighty five cents, that's the twenty twenty three. So based on that terminology, we haven't utilized those funds for the mandated cost.
Oh, just.
Is that correct, Terry?
So with this money, and all it is, is an Excel sheet here, so all of our money, all of our revenue, just goes into one account, and expenses are taken out of it, so I've paid it in, but it, I can make that, like on the Excel sheet, under the hundred and five thousand, I can say, hey, we've collected a hundred and five, expenses were forty one, the tax levy was fifty seven, which leaves the seven thousand for last year, yes.
So that means we would only have seven thousand one hundred and ten dollars in the tourism levy account.
As.
Correct, for last year, yes.
For twenty twenty.
And that, these were my recommendations, was that we really don't, we don't have enough money from last year to move forward, and we shouldn't be paying money out that we have not yet collected. So I think if, come the end of December, if there is money left over, then we could say, yes, you can have this for signage, or whatever council's wishes are, but my recommendations on my report were that, there was only the seventy one hundred dollars, really, because you guys did make a motion to use these funds towards mandated services.
And perhaps by that time, we'll have a new tax levy bylaw anyway, where we can determine what we can do.
Well, yeah, or you could have other establishments, or whatever.
Exactly. Again, my concern is just financial nature, where's the money coming from? Pure and simple, where's the money coming from? Or where's the money coming to?
Okay, Counsel Mackenzie.
So if I made the, so covering, since we have to pay the mandated services anyway, I think the intent was, I motioned to do that for this year, that for the last year with the budget, that we wouldn't end up having this, because we still have to pay it either way. So by taking it under the tourism accommodation levy, that's less that taxpayers would have to pay directly, and it'd be people that were staying at our hotel, our own hotel at the time, or this, would be paying. So it's, instead of our taxpayers paying it, it's people staying here that are paying it, which is kind of the idea of, like, every town has that, Niagara Falls has them all over the place, and different states have Niagara Falls everywhere you go, there's a, there's a kind of tourism. So we have to pay that service either way, so if we didn't use it for that, and it was used for things, say for, that they may now be asking for, or on top of that, somebody still, taxpayers still have to pay the mandated service fees, because we have to pay that, let's push down on us from the province, and we don't have choice, right? So my take on this is that if we can make that, those mandated services awash with something that's being paid by people outside of Hanwell, that would probably be less of a burden on the people that live in Hanwell. But, and that, if that means that there's only seven thousand or six thousand, whatever works out to this year left, then that maybe we'll have somewhere else that we can use that for, we're already utilizing a lot of services within, for tourism stuff with our hotel, maybe there are other, because there are other tourism things in Hanwell that possibly could use some of these funds from our tourism levy, right? It doesn't necessarily mean we have to use it from, for the source of the funds, it's paid into general, like our treasurer said, it's paid into general funding, now it's just like a line on a spreadsheet, so where we choose to use that for could be up to council, and I think we should put more thought into that, rather than just sending it right back to where thou came, type of thing, right? So that's, that's my thoughts.
And we all know that the Capital Region Tourism Group is certainly looking, you know, certainly spending money in Hanwell, and applying good tourism dollars for Hanwell.
That's right.
So much, much better than we've had before, so they are, you know, I think the money there is being wisely spent to them, and it's, again, it's not coming out of the pockets of our residents, it's coming out of the pockets of people that are staying at the hotel, that they want to pay regardless. Any other questions? Yes, Deputy Mayor.
I guess, I understand exactly, you know, where Counsel Mackenzie's coming from, but I do also remember from back in the beginning of, before municipal reform, when this all came about, and this was, like you say, a supposed to be a fund paid for by the hotels in particular, to promote tourism in the area, and I mean, that's good. Unfortunately, this is just one of many services that have been passed down to us, and mandated that we pay for it, and to me, I don't think that's entirely fair. I mean, I realize we don't, everybody in New Brunswick's in the same boat, and we're getting all these mandated services, and we're having to pay for them, but I really feel that it's not fair to, for example, we were talking about the blue sign for, I mean, to me, that's a, that's a no-brainer, I mean, we, they, you know, we need to be, that's a really good promotion for our business in Hanwell, and I don't like the idea that, and that's just an example, that's not the only thing, but to be taking away and giving, you know, using this to pay a fee that's been pushed down on us, I understand that it's tempting to do, but I don't think it's right, because I think it's taking away from our tourism opportunities, it's taking away from, like, if we wanted to use some of this for promotion for Hanwell and Hanwell Days, it's taking money from, you know, getting tourism promotion signs for, you know, probably the biggest business we have in Hanwell, and I don't think that, you know, I just don't think it's right. I think that we maybe could use some of it, I don't know what the answer is, but I mean, we just can't say that story, we're using it to pay for the mandated services, somebody's put down on us, and you're paying it, but too bad, we're not, you know, it doesn't leave, like you say, it doesn't leave a lot of money, and so it kind of defeats the purpose, I think, of the intent of the levy, and that is to promote tourism in Hanwell.
May I, may I comment on that?
Yes, Counsel Holt.
If you take a look at the bylaw of St., the tax levy bylaw in St. Andrews, which I'll send you a copy of, they actually have a committee that takes that particular funds and distributes it for tourism promotion, not specifically to an individual entity, okay? They utilize the funds and they distribute it accordingly based on their needs. The city of Fredericton, from what I understand, although they collect a considerable amount of this tax levy, do not individually hand back money to any of the motels, hotels, directly, okay? They in turn control that, they may in turn promote those particular motels, et cetera, et cetera, but they maintain control of it. As it sits now, the present last year, forty one thousand out of a hundred and five, we might as well say that's forty percent of the revenue generated by a mandated service, not a.
The revenue is not generated by a mandated service.
It, it, the levy is mandated, in the essence that it is a provincial mandated levy.
Yes, but it's not a mandated service, that's.
Okay, I apologize, not a mandated service, but a mandated.
It's a tax, it's a surtax.
But it's not a voluntary one collected by the establishments, it's one that the province says you must collect such that it can be utilized by the municipality for tax purposes. We have no idea where that three thousand or thirty six hundred dollars a month is going, and secondarily, that's forty one percent, okay, to one specific entity. To me, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, so that's your point, or?
Yeah, the point is, I do not feel that placing thirty six hundred dollars a month, okay, to one specific entity, based on the amount of income that's being generated presently, and the fact that fifty eight percent of that particular funds have to go back to the Capital Regions, Capital Region, or Capital Service Region, Capital, whatever, okay, you know what it is? Again, I apologize. And where the bylaw, or the motion was, inferred that that's what this tax levy was going to be used for, I just, I don't agree, spending thirty six hundred dollars to a specific entity.
Can I answer that?
Any other questions or points?
Yes, I'd like to answer some of those. First of all, this levy was actually brought forward by the hotel associations, in the very beginning, this was not something that the government cooked up, or whatever, this was something that was brought to us, I think at the time it was a Fredericton Tourism, or whoever, anyway, the associations had gotten together, they asked for this bylaw, they voluntarily wanted to collect, so that there would be money for promotion in all of the regions. We're not at all like St. Andrews, I mean, St. Andrews has got, you know, multiple businesses that they collect from, and tourism opportunities that they support. We unfortunately in Hanwell aren't that fortunate yet, and the idea was, I don't think it's fair to be picking on the one place that does happen to collect it and use it, I would never suggest that we automatically give it back, all of it back to the people who contributed to it, because it is meant to be, to promote tourism and that sort of thing in Hanwell. But likewise, I, to be totally honest, we don't have people knocking on our doors looking for money. We certainly need to keep some to, you know, spread around when we have the opportunities, and like I say, I'd love to see a whole pile of money for Hanwell Days, but realistically, I think we're being unfair to, you know, not be wanting to support the business, just because they happen to be the only one we have, and therefore, and they're the, you know, they're only contributor, really, and they are the ones who need support also. I think we need to be a little more, you know, less judgmental, put it that way.
I'm not being judgmental at all, Deputy Mayor, I'm being cost-effective, okay? Now, in saying that, and this is as of today, I'm going to go here and just take a look at, and I have mentioned it prior, before.
Paul, he's looking that up, just two questions to the chair, very quickly. His first question will be, is this going somewhere tonight? Is there, is there an aspir, and the second question would be, we should, there's a lot of discussions from two individuals, but probably should hear from the entire table to maybe decide if this is going to go somewhere tonight, or is this something to be table, or is this just intended to be an open discussion on just this?
May I just point out one additional subject, if you don't mind? Okay. The entity that we are talking about that in turn is promoting Hanwell, okay? Hanwell Attractions, Dining Bars, Warfront Lobby and Bar, Sam Snead, they do headquarters dining down, very nice, Teriyaki Experience Attractions, Escape Logic Games, Odell Park, Regent Mall, Garrison District, and these are tagged as Hanwell Attractions. Montanas, Thai Manias, East Side Marios, okay? They do have Ivy Stadium Diner and Hanwell Park, so they have added those, which is nice. I don't, we need money, and is thirty six hundred dollars a month a good return on our investment? Or are we going to let the taxpayers of Hanwell pay for our mandated services? Or the taxpayers of Hanwell paying for the advertising of the Radisson? I just had to bring it up, if some people are upset, I apologize, but it is just my way of thinking.
Well, thank you for your comments, Counsel Holt, I'll move quickly.
Can I say something?
You will in a second, I'm just going to run around the table now to see if there's any other comments, then you can comment, and then we can go back to regular council meeting, is that okay? Counsel Fox.
My recollection of the original motion that was made by Counselor Septon was that it could be used for the mandated services. I think we were very careful in choosing the word could, so that it was home, so that we could determine whether that's what it was to be used for, or not to be used for. I know we had a general discussion about it, but I don't recall anyone saying that it would definitely be used for that.
Counsel Hyslop.
I agree that we definitely used the wording very carefully, could. I think at the time, if my memory serves me correctly, was more to the point that we weren't entirely sure how all these mandated services were going to play out, we weren't sure if. We weren't sure if it really could be used at the time. We were still, there were still a lot of questions. So that's why the wording was chosen as it was. The other thing was that the thirty-six hundred dollars that we were giving was also kind of a trial because we didn't have staff to look at promoting tourism. We didn't have any of that, so this made sense. And at the time when we made the motion, we didn't know. Twenty twenty-three was when the whole municipal forum was coming into effect. So this was, you know, something, well, maybe this is what we can do. But my point is that the accommodation tax levy bylaw is coming up for review. And I really feel that a lot of these questions should be left to that discussion so that we're all on the same page kind of thing. My other questions, like even before we can give any answers, is the directional signs that they're talking about are between seven thousand to fifteen thousand. Like that's double, like we really need to know a price before we can say, yes, we can be able to do this, yes, council, like can approve. The other one is the repair to the other sign. They were saying they wanted a contribution. Well, what contribution do they want it? Ten percent, fifteen percent? Like you, we can't make decisions unless we have more information.
Have to have clarification for sure.
Before, and that's all I'm going to say.
Great, thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, actually, I tend to agree with what you've just said. I don't believe this was intended to be our discussion on this tonight. We do have our bylaw meeting coming up. The intention of, I think, eleven B is to have first reading of the bylaw so that we can then have our meeting and discuss the details of it. So I don't really see the point of this discussion.
Just excited, okay, but I'll move around, I'll continue to move around the table. Councilor Bridle.
Yeah, so I agree that the bylaw discussion is just starting tonight. There's a whole lot of things, all this stuff is going to be talked about, so look forward to that. I will say it was enlightening to read the St. Andrews bylaw. I know we're not St. Andrews by any stretch, but it's structured well and it's well written. And I think that's a very good reference document that we can look at as we form our own bylaw. As far as paying the mandated service, I'm coming around to the thought that maybe at least a good portion of that, if not all of it, should be paid by the levy. And maybe the question is, is whatever it is, fifty-four thousand dollars, what is it?
I think it's fifty-four for this.
Fifty-four thousand?
Fifty-eight thousand dollars for twenty twenty-four.
Okay, the question I have is, are we getting our money's worth out of that? Are we getting, I mean, how do you quantify it? But are we getting fifty-eight thousand dollars worth out of that? I don't know, maybe that's something to think about as we go through the bylaw.
Of course, as we all know, it doesn't take much to spend fifty-eight thousand dollars these days.
No, but I mean, I'm coming around to the view of maybe a significant part or maybe all of it being paid by the eleven. But there'd be more discussion on this as we, you know, do the bylaw.
Thank you. Counselor Gross, did you have any comments?
Oh, nothing.
Counselor McKenzie.
I have no further comments, Mr. Chair.
And Counselor DeClan.
I see, I'm listening to everybody, thank you. Because a lot of it is education for those of us who weren't here before, so I'm learning a lot. I do see the point of saving the taxpayers some money for sure. And I also see the fact that, you know, there is one group being contributed to. I do feel though, like they're one of the only folks. So I think this just warrants further discussion. I think we need to go ahead and do the bylaw stuff and then have a good thorough discussion about what we decide to do, so.
And Ms. Parker, or CEO? I bet you thought I forgot.
So with the mandated service, Counselor Bringley, you were just saying, is it worth the money? That we will never be able to find out. And it's not going to matter if they charge us fifty-eight thousand or a hundred and fifty-eight thousand. It's mandated and we don't have a choice in the matter. As far as the blue signs and the repairs to the sign, I have this on the agenda because you guys really need to make a motion. So even if it is, we need further clarification or something like, this has been dragging on for a fair amount of time and they would like to have an answer on it. I just looked up that motion again that we did and then it said that it could be used for the mandated service. It didn't say that we had to. So I'll leave those up to you. However, we went back, Counselor Holt had mentioned about the advertising that they had put on and staff went back to Mr. Johnson and he said that whatever we want to give them, they will update their website to include the Hamel businesses.
And they did everything that I, that Counselor Holt mentioned. I contacted Mr. Johnson and I told him exactly, and he put exactly what I asked.
He did it.
Yeah. So that's all I have to say. I think that something needs to be, a motion needs to be said tonight, either one way or the other. And maybe for last year's funds, then say that we will pay, like if you want, if you think those tourism signs are a great idea and he's saying they're from seven to fifteen thousand, maybe say that we'll do to a maximum of ten thousand dollars or fifteen thousand dollars or whatever. And then that doesn't, we don't have to bring it back again. Like just say, if that is what he's saying the price is, put to a maximum amount and then.
Take it from there.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
So basically, we have almost fifteen, no, almost fifteen thousand dollars collected already between what was left from last year and what was collected this year. So before the end of the year, we'll certainly have enough to pay a certain amount of, okay?
Okay. Well, thank you, Ms. Parker, appreciate your input. So first off, I'll need a motion to go back to regular counseling. Is there any other comments? Has everybody had their say pretty well?
I make a motion to move back to regular counseling.
Okay, so a secondary, please?
No.
You don't need to.
You don't need to, just.
So we're back in regular session. Now can I get a motion from counsel to direct the clerk to spend, or the CEO, the treasurer to spend up to fifteen thousand dollars to assist the.
Or whatever amount that they deem, like.
Anyway, I'll make the motion to authorize and direct the clerk to pay fifteen, up to fifteen, or to fifteen thousand dollars for the blue tourism signs. Contribute to the tourism signs for the Radisson, or whatever you want to call it.
Yep, the Radisson is correct. Do I have a secondary? Second, okay, we have a secondary. Okay, any questions, comments from counsel? Counselor Holt.
Do we know how much revenue and/or additional accommodations are going to be generated to the Radisson by the posting of the sign? We have no idea, okay, exactly how many, what their accommodations are. How much is generated by online, i.e. the thirty-six hundred dollars that we are providing them? So is there an actual cost benefit for this sign? In the essence, is it going to generate for the municipality of Hamel and also the Radisson? Initial fifteen thousand minimum, just to cover the cost? We have no idea, we know what the occupancy rate is, Terry gets that on a regular basis, but we have no idea on that occupancy, how much is already predetermined by online bookings? Is a Radisson actually a motel or an accommodation that the regular traveler is going to pull into? Maybe Travel Lodge, maybe this, that, or whatever. But is it going to be beneficial in generating? And that's what the sign is, is to generate revenue, generate traffic.
Again, you're asking questions that we certainly don't have the expertise to answer here. I can only assume that if the Radisson wants to erect a tourism sign, it's to their benefit. So is there anything other, any other comments?
Well, in that instance, they're asking us to pay for it.
They're not asking us to pay for it, they're asking us to use a surtax from what they generate to pay for it.
That's our money, not a surtax that they generate.
Again, it's our money to spend for tourism. So it's not our money to spend.
If we are spending the money for tourism, is it cost effective to spend that money?
Who would know?
I don't think it is.
Yeah, so I'll move on to Counselor Dekle.
Well, so you will never know that. You will drive yourself crazy, that's very subjective. Like the sign could be seen by five people, it could be seen by a hundred people. And I'm sorry, you're going to set a precedent. You can't expect every organization you give tourism levy money to to provide nickel and dime accountability for what they do. I understand that you want to know and you want to know that we're investing in something that's good. But sometimes you have to trust in the folks that you're providing the funds to.
Well, they trusted one of their lawyers and you know, we're that.
Okay, but that's completely unrelated, completely unrelated.
Point of order, folks, keep the subjects on the table, please.
Again, if we don't know, again, it's the account again. Okay, if we don't know, if we don't know, we don't know. And then we.
Point of order, discussion, we're moving around the table for discussion. I have Deputy Mayor Jonah.
Okay, actually, I just wanted to say I do, I agree with you one hundred percent, my Counselor Dekleva, that these are very subjective things. And all I can, one of the things that I find, and I've heard other people say the same things, in just in all the years of traveling around and whatever, there are certain places, PEI, for example, for one of them being one of the very best, that they have those tourism signs for every little place possible. And they are, not what you call an international sign, but they're known, people see them, people notice them. They would probably see that little sign faster than they would see the great big General Radisson advertising sign. If people are looking for places, they, those are the kind of, those I think are money well spent. Because I think they're kind of a known entity, they're, people look for them, they will be used. And as we say, this is not our money. That's one of the things that was made very clear to us when we first looked at them, when we had the very first presentation from the Tourism Association back in the day, was this is not our money to use to put in a general interview revenue for taxes. This is money to be spent on tourism. And yes, they contribute the most and yes, therefore they would probably want the most. Nobody is suggesting that we're not going to ever give money to anybody else or use it for other promotion. But, you know, we have the money, this is our need. The sign will be there for years and years and years and years. And, you know, it's, this whole conversation is going to be nickel and diming for things that we can't possibly, you know, have concrete answers for. But this money is for tourism and it's being spent on tourism is being spent wisely, I think.
Thank you, Counselor Fox.
I feel as though there's a difference between the big sign, the big business sign that's up there and the, and the blue signs.
I agree.
And so where I, where I stand on this is the big, the big sign that they have, that's a business expense. To me, that's a, that's an expense that, that we should not be covering. However, the blue signs, the blue signs, I, I, I agree with the Deputy Mayor that those are recognizable signs. They will help drive traffic off the highway and into Hanwell. Maybe the Radisson, it may be Porter's, it may be Crossroads. All of those things, when you see the little blue sign, you know, that you can get off the highway and go and do your thing. So for me, it's a, it's a long-term investment. And I think that, you know, up to fifteen thousand dollars for something that'll be there for years and years and years, I think is a good investment and so I will be supporting it.
Okay, now Counselor McKenzie.
Yeah, I wasn't sure we were going to go around or not, but.
I'm just going by, show of hands.
Okay. So I will be supporting this too and for a couple reasons. So that I do agree with the Counselor Fox and with the Deputy Mayor that, that there is a difference between this type of sign and like the business type sign. That the business sign is great to show the location of it and so forth, but it's not something people will specifically look for. But if you see, there is kind of an international standard on, on things like hotels and food and stuff like that, that is visible from highways everywhere. So I will be supporting that because I think that it would be good to have that and I can't believe we don't have it. But that's kind of a secondary point to that is that I think in addition to this, we, not just us as Hanwell, but we should be lobbying UMMV and others to have them placed everywhere in New Brunswick. I've been all over North America a lot and New Brunswick has to be the only place that doesn't have these signs everywhere. If you go to Nova Scotia, Quebec, Ontario, Maine, anywhere in New England, especially northern New England, like in Maine and New Hampshire, stuff like that, all the way down to Florida, to California, to Vancouver Island, every highway in North America has these signs on every exit except New Brunswick. I don't understand that. And it's, it's something like they spent all this money a little while ago changing the little designs on the, on the trail map signs and stuff for the Sunshine Trail and all this other stuff. But they don't have, but you don't know what's at your exit. So when you're driving, especially if they're going to label us as the quote unquote drive-through province, when people are driving through here, they have no anywhere to stop or where things are. They don't know if there's a gas station at this exit or a hotel at this exit or somewhere to eat at this exit. And, and you know, it's, it's five hundred kilometers long from the north tip of Evanston area to Sackville. You don't know where you're going to stop because I don't understand why we don't have that. At some point, it'd be nice to see UMMV and, you know, places like that push to have something like that done. As you go into election year, maybe a great idea to have something like that. But, but I do support this because we don't have that yet. So if we can get this for us at least, I think it's a good idea.
Okay. Counselor Heissler.
So I have to agree with all three of you. My only question, I think the directional signs are important and they do promote tourism. And I agree with you, I've traveled all over and I look for them. And when they're not, New Brunswick is not really good at all. But my question is more towards the motion. Should it be amended to say fifteen thousand plus HST?
Sure.
Yeah, sure.
Sure, sorry, I never think of HST, don't ask me why.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Counselor.
Fifteen thousand plus HST.
Counselor Holt, I see your hand up. Do you have anything more to add different?
I do indeed. This is why we have discussions.
Yep, but we can't keep repeating the same thing over and over again.
Exactly. Everybody has a different perspective and allows you in turn to take a look at different perspectives. And I appreciate, I can appreciate the perspectives that being given. And I'm not going to be narrow focused. They are strong reasons for supporting. And quite frankly, based on these individuals, I will support the motion.
Okay, great. Do we have any other comments?
I just.
Counselor Bridle.
I totally agree with the blue sign and the benefits of all that. I just don't think we should pay for it. I think we could other priorities, mandated services, so I'll be voting against it.
Okay. Counselor Gross, any comments?
I, I'm, I fully support the Blue Road sign, according to.
Great, there being no further comments, I am now going to give the call for the vote.
No, we have to amend the motion, do we not?
Add a motion first.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes, okay.
So, okay, so I'll make the amended motion that we direct the clerk to fifteen thousand dollars plus HST.
I'll second it.
Okay, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary, mind.
I'll have to say no. And it just, it all worked by.
No, nay is fine.
This is just, this is just amendment, yeah. Just amendment, it's not full motion, yeah.
So the amendment is carried.
Right.
Yes, now for the regular motion?
Yeah, call for questions for the regular.
Okay, call for the question.
For the amended motion.
The amended motion, yeah.
Amendment.
Okay, I'll now call for the question for the first motion.
The amended motion, to fifteen thousand plus HST, it's the amended motion.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded?
Nay.
Okay, so if my math serves me correctly, we have six for, two against, so motion is carried. Thank you very much, counsel. Moving on. So now we're gonna get into B, the amendment to the bylaw nineteen, twenty nineteen, a bylaw related to tourism accommodation levy. Can I have somebody read that motion, please?
Okay, I'll move the amendments to bylaw number nineteen dash twenty nineteen, a bylaw relating to tourism accommodation levy, and the rural community of Hanwell will be given its first reading by title.
I'll second it.
All those, any other comments, questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you.
Amendment to bylaw number nineteen dash twenty nineteen, a bylaw relating to tourism accommodation levy in the rural community of Hanwell.
Thank you, Council. Item twelve, correspondence, item A, correspondence from a resident on private road. Do you need a motion to receive that correspondence, please?
I move to receive the correspondence from a resident with respect to the maintenance of King Settlement Road.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor receiving the correspondence, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you. Item B is correspondence from resident zoning application. Can I get a motion to receive the correspondence from a resident with respect to the zoning application?
I move to receive the correspondence from residents with respect to the zoning application.
Second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you. Now, item C is just where the mayor corresponded to the Honorable Mary Wilson regarding the insert into the property tax bill that was received. So the letter was basically, I think everybody's had a copy of it, to the Honorable Mary Wilson, just mentioning that the government was providing, misleading insert, providing to residents with the property tax bills. So that's something that came from UMMV, and was again, being put out by all municipalities to the province. So item D, correspondence from residents, garbage tender council decision.
A motion received, the correspondence.
Second.
I'll second it.
Any questions, comments?
Who was, who made that motion?
Me, Karen.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, me, you can say.
The other me.
All those, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you. Okay, moving on to item thirteen, meetings and special events, item A, mayor's report, can I get a motion, please?
I move to receive the mayor's report as presented.
I'll second it.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item B, emergency measures, I need motion to receive the emergency manager's committee report.
I move to receive the emergency manager's committee report dated March twenty seventh, twenty twenty four.
Secondary?
Second.
Questions, comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you. Moving on to G, Macteque Community Liaison Committee Report.
I move to receive the Macteque Community Liaison Committee Report dated March twenty first, twenty twenty four.
I'll second that.
Questions, comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you, Council. Item I, Hanwell Days Committee.
I move to receive the Hanwell Days Committee Report dated March twenty fifth and April eighth, twenty twenty four.
I'll second.
Questions, comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you, Council. Item fifteen, CAO treasures reports. I think everybody's had a copy of the report. Can we get a motion, please?
I don't like the motion to accept the report. Does the CAO won't make any comments on that?
Do you have any comments?
So, I have made a few motions on that. So, the cameras, I really think with the number of break-ins that we've had, that we should look at doing new cameras, to be put in our high-traffic areas, and then maybe also, at the same time, get quotes for security cameras to be placed at David Bell. I think ours right now, we should get those right away, and then get a quote for the David Bell, and I'll bring those back to you, because I'm not sure even how many we would need for that area.
Yeah, there was a camera, oh yeah, that's over on the other one, the gormon one, okay, we're good. Do we need a motion on that?
So I'd like to move to authorize and direct the clerk to get quotes for four new cameras to be placed in high-traffic areas, and to also get a quote for security cameras to be placed at David Bell Park.
I will second that.
Questions, comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried.
Okay, and then my other one is a radar sign. It has been at the company now for quite a long time. I think that we need to email the company, tell them that they only have until Friday. You could push it to Monday if you want to, and then if there's no response, then we get our lawyer at Cox and Palmer to send that out, send out a letter.
Terry, how heavy is that sign?
I have no idea, I have them never picked it up.
I'm gonna say fifty pounds, we moved them before, so they're probably fifty, sixty pounds.
But they would fit in a car, would they not?
No, fit in a truck.
On a truck?
Yeah.
I was gonna volunteer to drive out and pick it up.
Didn't we have the posts?
They don't have the posts, though, right?
No, no, they just have this, they have the sign.
No, but we don't, didn't we unattach the post from the bottom, and the post was like twelve feet long?
The post is still there, they only have the sign.
Okay, because when we move them, we usually move the post and the sign.
Yeah, but you wouldn't take the post to get fixed.
Yeah, they took the sign and get fixed.
Long as the post not still attached to it.
I've got no problem taking it, drive out, and just, he's obviously not gonna fix it. If you want me to drive out and attempt to pick it up, I can do that prior to anything else, your call.
No, I think it needs to go through us.
Yeah, but we may end up having to take somebody to go pick it up, or get delivered, or whatever. We've got to find out what on earth is going on, why.
We have staff here to do that, there's staff, we have a truck, so.
So I move to authorize and direct the clerk to send an email to the company that has our radar sign demanding to have it returned by Monday, April twenty first.
That's it?
Twenty five Mon, Monday, April twenty second. If there is no response, I move to authorize and direct the CAO to contact our lawyer at Cox and Palmer.
Secondary?
I'll second that.
Question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you. Was there anything else there?
No, I just need to have it accepted.
Oh, just point of information, there was also a request in there about the school district?
No.
No?
No.
No.
We decided that we, Mayor Morrison and I talked about that today, and we said we really should leave that up to the school district, it probably shouldn't be something that we get involved in. Because we don't know how many kids that's going to impact, like, maybe, yeah, I'm not sure.
Could be one, could be twenty.
That's why there's a district education council, right?
So didn't we have a motion to receive the report?
Not yet, but we need one.
So I need a motion to accept the CAO treasures.
To accept.
I move to accept the CAO treasures report as presented.
Secondary?
I'll second.
Questions, comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Council, motion carried. Okay, item sixteen, there's nothing to report on the rec building, I do believe, new business, we were into lawn care, there's a, I guess there's a few things to go through there.
Yeah, you guys have a report, Taylor did a very good cost analysis for you, what the cost would be to have a lawn company do the lawns, and what it would cost for us to work summer students, which also would require some personal equipment. What we're looking for today is authorization to purchase new equipment, or if you guys decide that's not what you want to do anymore, to go ahead with hiring someone. So that is what you have in front of you.
Where is it?
Can I do the next?
Seventeen A.
Seventeen A, okay.
That's the report.
So what do we need from the capital reserve fund, sorry, make that motion, I've lost my number.
I think it was sixteen.
Sixteen thousand one hundred.
What's that taxing, Terry?
I can't do tax anyway, so, so I just say to a maximum of sixteen, I'd even say sixteen thousand.
Or could I just say seventeen, and then everything's covered?
Sure.
Okay, all right, I'll make a motion then.
I move to authorize and direct the clerk to purchase a zero-turn lawnmower up to a maximum of seventeen.
Seventeen thousand.
From the capital reserve fund, and the HST portion to be paid from the general operating fund account.
Secondary?
I'll second.
So, general, did he say operating fund?
Yes.
GST, that's what you put in there.
That's what it's got.
Capital reserve.
Yeah, the HST, the company.
HST come up from the general operating fund.
Is that where it should come from?
Okay.
Yeah, that's what you said, right?
Okay, I've got a different motion here, so.
That's the one you did, yeah.
Can I reread the motion, so we're sure?
Yeah, sorry.
I move to authorize and direct the clerk to purchase a zero-turn lawnmower up to a maximum of seventeen thousand dollars from the capital reserve fund and the HST portion to be paid from the general operating fund account.
And the motion has been seconded.
Yeah, I was seconded, yes.
Any questions, comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you. Item B, the access roads.
So I did that report, it's access road and parking lot expansion combined. As you know, I was speaking with Keith, and we took a look at the access road. We're still waiting on him to get back to us on whether we'll be Wawa permits, that kind of thing. The parking lot, he did note a brook on the property, so that will require a Wawa permit also. We'll need an access permit from DTI, because we're gonna be crossing, like, it's on the road. Not sure if DTI will okay it, just because of the backing out onto the road. So we're possibly looking at maybe just expanding our existing parking lot, removing the grass, resurfacing it, making the parking area a little smaller, because it's very spaced, it's quite spaced. Anyway, so there are a couple of motions there for you guys to consider. That's all I got, do you have anything, Terry?
No.
Okay, can I get a motion on the access road, please?
I move to authorize and direct the clerk to obtain any approvals, permits required to allow this project to move forward, and further authorize and direct the clerk to obtain quotes to excavate and build an access road.
Secondary?
I'll second.
Questions, comments?
One question would be, of course, should be gravelled, I believe that it should be.
Oh, yes.
Anyone disagrees?
It should be gravelled.
Yeah, it should be gravelled, yeah, just so we're clear.
So that'll make sure we're looking for that in the, when we send out the votes.
Yeah, this is just authorized with permits.
Yes.
Any other questions, comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you. Now about the parking lot expansion. Another motion, please.
I move to authorize and direct the clerk to obtain quotes to expand their current parking lot for additional parking on the side and the front of the parking lot in the area of the electronic sign.
Secondary?
I'll second.
Questions, comments?
I would only support this as long as it doesn't involve making the spaces smaller between the, right now, because there's really nice spacing in the stops right now.
Not between, I'm talking about, like, the roads, like, you've got your parking, and then you've got enough to fit like a transport truck in between row A and row B. There's a lot of space there.
Oh, you're talking.
The backing, like, there's a lot of space.
Okay, I thought you meant like the individual spaces, because we're very close to standard size right now, okay.
No, we wouldn't change those.
I was worried that that was part of the thought, to make those smaller.
Any other questions?
So, Council, were you interested in getting at least the part sealed that is over our accessibility trail, and having those new lines down, put down at the same time?
I don't know what you're talking about.
So where are our accessibility wheelchair spots are right now?
Oh, okay.
Like, where I usually are?
Right, yeah.
Whatever, under the Rick Hanson thing, we're supposed to have a designated spot in between, so that if somebody has a wheelchair ramp and a van, then you have room to be, you have that extra spot. So one parking spot is kind of like double.
We do have that.
So in order, so in order for them to repaint, they would have to put a sealer over the whole thing and then repaint it again. So I just thought that would be a great time if they're coming to do, paint new lines when we put our parking lot in, that we would do that all at the same time.
Well, there's space between them now, space with lines through it, they're not right.
There is, but it's not large enough under the Rick Hanson, it needs to be a little bit larger.
Well, then obviously, yeah, when we get it repainted, we would have those painted up to standard, same as everything else, I would think, didn't you?
Yeah, I would think you'd make that the standard size.
Yeah, you definitely do make certain that it is.
Yeah, we'll just make sure that it is.
There goes the sound.
Okay, any other questions, comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you, Council. Moving on to item D, is a pervertation of false information. This is a response to a resident's address to Council at the Council meeting of February twenty first, twenty twenty four, concerning Hanwell CAO's salary. I will repeat the comments first, and then state the correct information afterwards. The comment was transcribed from the recording of the meeting, and this is also available on YouTube. So first off, it's a resident's comment, it was considering the CAO's salary. I quote, "I have recently been aware that Hanwell Rural Community CAO's Hanwell salary is closer, or maybe even more than that of the CAO of the city of Moncton. This is the largest city in the province of New Brunswick. I understand that the CAO position was only created in October twenty twenty three, with the amalgamation, but for a small rural community such as Hanwell to pay one person an annual salary of between eighty-four thousand and ninety-nine thousand a year seems a bit much. As we all know, the CAO was awarded this position without a job advertisement or competition because of its political point. Possibly when the CAO retires, which according to her will be before the next municipal election, Hanwell Rural Community may be in a position to look at the CAO annual salary, that'd be more fitting to a rural community the size of Hanwell. Correct information, the salary for the CAO in Moncton in twenty twenty three is posted on their website for all to see. It's two hundred and eighteen thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars, a far cry from what the resident falsely stated." We have a quote here from the CAO. "As for the CAO being a political appointment, I had to send in my resume and a list of my accomplishments over my career of eighteen years, plus state the courses and education that I have. I wasn't just given the position, as once again was falsely stated, and not sure how the resident would even know what the process was." Now, I have comments on that to add. "It is very unfortunate set of circumstances when a resident shows up and personally attacks a member of staff or council. It is not in the best interest of Hanwell and accomplishes nothing. Further attacks of this nature will not be tolerated, and the offending party will be asked to leave. Council encourages residents to attend council meetings and/or listen to the recordings. Addressing council or doing a presentation is welcomed, one just has to follow the procedure. All I ask that in doing so, please be respectful and factual." So I will move on to, the next item on our agenda is upcoming activities, which is A, which is the Zoomers, Monday's at two P M. and Thursday's at twelve P M. And we're going to go into closed session, so I will ask the clerk to turn off the recording and ask for a motion to win closed session, please.
Motion to go into closed session.
Secondary?
I'll second.
All those in favor of going into closed session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? We are now in closed session.
I move to come out of closed session and move back into open session.
I'll second.
Comments, questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried, can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
I move we adjourn.
Meeting is adjourned at eight fifty-nine.